Good evening and welcome to the school. On Tuesday, October 19th, if everyone could please rise to pledge allegiance to that. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we're here to discuss Little Compton School District necessity of school construction stage two community forum. And we have a presentation from Phil Conte. I'm going to turn it over to you. I am going to ask that if our attendance in Zoom, if they wouldn't mind adding their name and address. Because we're going to have an interactive part and to participate in this open meeting, we need to know your name and address. So that would just save us that step later. And if Mr. Matter on us, if you could sign in as well, so you could participate in the activity, that would be great too. Thank you. Take it away, Phil.
Well, thank you, everyone, for having me here. I have a brief presentation which may be familiar to some of you, but I think it's important that we review some of the factual information before we engage in four simple activities. There is a virtual component for our guests and we will provide instructions for them as well. And these activities are meant to solicit opinion that is not based on a physical facility assessment. For example, we can tell the condition of a roof or a windows based on our expertise, but we don't know how the community or individuals may feel about the school, the strengths, the challenges that the school has. What are some interests to them in moving the school towards a new century model of teaching and learning? And that's what these activities are meant to bring about. So I will go through this presentation briefly. We do have a very simple agenda. I want to familiarize you or others who are participating with the necessity of school construction process. I think it's good to continually go over that, let you know what tasks we have completed to date, and then participate in this engagement activity, both physical and virtual, where we can give you an opportunity to share your thoughts. So the ride necessity of school construction process is a staged process where you begin by submitting an intent to do some work in Little Compton. And then you are invited to submit a stage one, which identifies the need, what are the needs of the school? And that is based both on a facility condition assessment as well as solicitation from the educators. Then we take that need and submit it to the school building authority and they review it and say, is this complete? Do we agree that this need exists in Little Compton? They have received our stage one, they've accepted and approved our stage one, and they have invited us to submit a stage two, which is the solution to the needs that you presented. So you presented the problem. Now in stage two, we want you to present the solution. And with that solution must be must be accompanying cost estimates from a third party group so that the school building authority can look at that information and say, yes, we agreed that this is the solution and this is the cost for Little Compton. And then they approve the reimbursement. And then you move forward with funding as you see fit, either through a bond or local. That submission for stage two is February 15, 2022, and that's what we are actively working towards. And that's one of the reasons why we are meeting this evening. So the task that we have completed to date, we have completed the facility condition assessment that has been done by architects and engineers in our company. We've had interviews with administrative administration. We've had an educator workshop, we've gathered data, and now we want to gather a little bit more data from you and your constituents. So this is a comprehensive schedule that brings us to February 15th where we submit this. There's a couple of things I want you to see here in that we are regularly going to be updating the building committee, the school committee and the town council as we proceed. And we've identified dates where we will submit to you information, information that will have a presentation accompanied with it, but will require no activity at that point in time. And then we will come back the following month for subsequent approvals to submit the stage two. So today we are at the top of the schedule, 10/19, the community forum. On 10/21, we're going to update the school building committee. And we expect to attend the November 4th town council meeting to give you an update on what we've completed, what we have done so far. And then we will continue with regular updates. So it's important, we will maintain this schedule. In the schedule, you will see that we are submitting information to you in with enough time for you to review it, ask questions when we've come to you, and then come back at a later time for approval. So I'm sensitive to what I heard at the last meeting, so we have corrected that and it is formalized here. If you recall, in the stage one submission, we identified three categories, deferred maintenance, capital improvements, and programmatic enhancements. So the 10-year need and deferred maintenance that we've identified is broken up into a number of categories from building envelope all the way to the site. And over the next 10 years, the major areas that will need capital and will need funding is the building envelope, which more specifically would be the windows, select windows in the building, and the interior finishes. Some of the interior finishes are starting to wear. And then third is HVAC components, which is not uncommon as all these equipments, just like the boiler in your house, has a useful life and we are approaching that useful life in some cases. Now, while we did this deferred maintenance assessment, we looked at what other capital improvements would benefit, have the value added benefit long term over the next 10 years, and we identified three categories. The smallest, the acoustical ceilings, there are a number of classrooms that do not have acoustical ceilings. It makes it very difficult space to hear and teach. That really ought to be corrected. It's not a deferred maintenance item because the ceilings don't exist. So if they don't exist today, they can't be deferred, but it really is an improvement that should be considered. The next was some roadwork and some stormwater management work. We feel there are opportunities on site to improve that and that should be investigated. And the last is air conditioning. There are opportunities now to introduce air conditioning at a very cost effective way because of the investments that school districts like yourself have made during COVID to increase ventilation. So we have a good central heating plant, we have good ventilation, let's finish it off with air conditioning. Schools are asked to do a lot more than they were before, or open earlier, run longer. And thermal comfort means a lot to the students' learning abilities. The last time we presented some educational programmatic enhancements, it was really just a shot in the dark. So we removed that from the presentation because it's a meeting like this where we want to actually hear more about maybe some of the programmatic deficiencies. They may be minor, but very strategic, they may be major. We're going to give you an opportunity to share some of them. One thing we do want you to keep in mind is that there is a strong move from the traditional model of teaching and learning to what we're calling a new century model of teaching and learning. And it's defined differently. It's no longer called schooling, right? It's lifelong learning. We're teaching our children to become problem solvers and to access content and information in a way that we were all not taught. So there's a number of items here that we want you to keep in mind as you think about that. One of the activities that we're going to engage in is a gallery of some images. And I want your feedback on those images because these classrooms and spaces will not look like what you have today. And maybe, maybe at the end of the day, a part of this project is to enhance some of those classroom spaces with furniture. I did present this last time and I always will. It's important to be innovative. You're going to see some innovative images here, but we need to do it responsibly. We understand that there's a fiscal component to all of this that we need to be mindful of. So regarding the project size or scope, it needs to be balanced with funding limits and debt ceilings and bonding capacities and what the will of the community is, because the community will have other needs as well. We've identified these guiding principles that I'm going to ask you to rank in the matter, in the number of importance. These are some things that we've heard through our time in Little Compton thus far. So this will be one of the activities that we participate in. So why are we doing this now? Well, we do know that there is a statewide bond approval that has a number of incentives that we would like to pursue. And as I mentioned, similar to your house and the boiler in your house, you pay now or pay later, you will have to pay something, will need to be fixed. And the long-term solution may be a long-range plan. But where we are right now is to address the facility condition assessment needs, listen to what some of the education enhancements could be, and then balance that out. So the four activities that we're going to engage in. The first one is what I call critical analysis of Little Compton School Department strengths and challenges. We're going to then look at the facility floor plan and the aerial image of the school and the site. I'd like, I'm interested in your comments. We're going to rank those guiding principles. And then we're going to have this model facility image gallery walkthrough. Now each activity ranges from three to nine minutes. All right. It isn't, it's meant to be active, so you will have to stand up, walk around, write some stuff down. We have a virtual component which I will be walking through with our participants. So for the first activity, and let me speak to our virtual attendees. On your mobile device, if you could download the app called Poll Everywhere from either Apple or Google, go ahead and do so. You'll be asked to sign in and this username is A594. You can do it here if you'd like, although you will be conducting the activities face to face here. This is for our virtual friends. All right, you could do it from your desktop as well at www.poleverywhere.com. And again, the username A594. Nothing will happen yet until I advance the slide. So for my face-to-face guests, I would like you to identify, in your opinion, what you consider the strengths or challenges in Little Compton School Department. And feel free to comment on programs, curriculum, facilities, and/or other school works. For example, you may feel that a strength is the Little Compton School Department class size, but a challenge may be a limited exposure to career and tech ed. I don't know, I just made these examples. But for the next seven minutes, I'm going to ask you to grab a Post-it and some markers, write your comments, and put them on these two boards. So we're going to go ahead, start that now. Feel free to, like I said, write any comment. I'll go ahead and start a timer. So I'm going to look really foolish if I'm the only one up here. So I will advance the slide for our guests virtually. And locally, feel free, write a comment and please post it. And I want to know, in your opinion, what you think are the strengths and challenges? Because this will inform how we approach these projects. You may have comments that I am unaware of. And something as ubiquitous as putting in a bottle filling station may be the answer to some of your comments. So you certainly can write them down at the desk. We don't have to post it. I can collect them later if we'd like. But it's the strengths and challenges, in your opinion, of the school department. Strengths may be the teachers. Challenges may be funding. It could be, once you start writing, these will start to come quicker to you. And if our virtual guests do comment, we will see their comment on the screen.
Let me get so many stickies, you know that.
I got plenty of stickies. What we typically do is we will collect these comments, we will aggregate them ourselves and create some information that we will obviously share back and report back. Now, since we may not be putting them on the board, you may have to tell me if you're writing a strength or a challenge, by the way. Kind of funny for me to, if someone just wrote Little Compton weather, I don't know if that's a strength or a challenge. Well, I certainly have this. You can put them here or you can write that it's a strength or challenge. Oh, so we do have comments from our guests. Do you see them? We're moving the boards now. Yes, I know it's a long day. We're almost done.
No stove and no dishwasher. That is the truth.
Listen, I do sincerely always appreciate the participation that makes my job easier. We got about a minute and a half left. Obviously, need more time, let me know. Try to avoid as much awkward silence as possible.
I signed in just to make sure it worked because I was at that breakfast this morning and it wasn't. People to, am I reminding people to sign in?
As a reminder, if you are in, if you are viewing this online and participating, if you could please share your name and address as part of over that and public participation, we need to take note of that in our minutes. So it would be helpful if you could just put your name and address in the chat box. Thank you.
Excellent. Everybody get to see the comments from our virtual friends?
Yeah.
No? And we will record all of these. All right. Anybody here watch Squid Game? Okay, you all passed the first gate. You and I, Polly, you're the only, and I are the only ones that.
It's on, Phil.
Yeah, okay, it's okay. All right, excellent. So thank you to my virtual friends as well. Excellent. Okay. Activity number two. Activity number two, we're going to ask you to identify spaces within the school that you feel are deficient, need improvement, are functioning just fine, but could be enhanced. In addition to the building, I'd also like you to comment on the site plan. Areas of the site that could be improved or could be enhanced. So this is a nine-minute activity that I would like your comments on stickies and to put them on the board. For our virtual friends, they will be doing the same activity. I will manage their three slides, three minutes a slide. So some examples that we've come up with. Parent drop-off is difficult. Acoustics are poor in this classroom. So this requires some knowledge of the buildings or what you have heard from your constituents, your own personal preference. I'm absolutely interested in hearing about that as well. So let's go ahead and we will start another timer. I will start for my virtual friends. They will start with the site plan. My virtual friends have three minutes. My friends here have nine minutes for all three.
Johnson. Can you move that screen up on the top right, the video, so I can, when the words come up, I can read everything? I could do that too.
And drainage for the field area. Who that is? What is the password to put into the poll?
I have nothing for.
Imagine what this is like when you have like 100 people doing this. Pretty wild. Be surprised, a lot of the comments are similar, small groups, large groups. A lot of the problems are not unique just to one school district.
Say something Jonathan knows it. Oh, your own password. I can, I could take some guesses.
Just the five nine four.
Is that the.
I'm going to advance the slide for my virtual friends.
Yard to nowhere, Jonathan. Oh, that was my idea. Waist high.
There's no wrong way. I will take the information in any form.
Holly, could you add the cafeteria, no stove, no dishwasher? Thanks. That works. Little Compton.
How are you supposed to expand the screen on your phone?
I don't think you can. You can't, unfortunately. Sorry. That's, that's a one thing I saw when I was putting this together.
Yeah, I mean, I can't read that. Yeah, I mean, I can't read that.
That is, that is a lesson learned on this in turn when I try to do the floor plan component to it. All right, I'm gonna go to the last slide for our virtual guests, and we will have a few minutes left here. This activity.
Right, that's why I had to look and see.
Who needs more stickies? Somebody's rationing stickies.
I didn't know that. I didn't know that were small ones. I grabbed a big one.
I always got giant on.
This is from a public.
I can't make it bigger on my computer either.
So that would not, are you virtually, trying to do it virtually? So I believe that that is one lesson learned here is that.
Not just the phone, but here, too.
Yeah, I think it's the limitation of the software.
Okay.
So are people at home going to be able to add answers at the end if they want to? With this?
So.
Well, somebody added one to this one.
Well, when I move to the next activity, they will not be able to add answers on a previous activity. They certainly, there's an avenue for them to chat questions or to make comments that we can note.
So I just did record that someone had made a public comment in the chat feature, so I just can wrote it out and put it up on that. And another person also had mentioned that the pinch works to enlarge on her computer. Oh, that helps or not.
All right. Check our time. And you're coming in with just a few seconds, so I do appreciate your participation in that activity. We will go ahead. And that is that. All right, activity number three. This is only a three-minute activity. It will start for our virtual friends when I advance to the next slide. But for you all, I would just ask you to rank these from most important to least important, in your opinion. These guiding principles that we have just developed based on what we have learned about Little Compton thus far. And if you have a comment or a guiding principle, please feel free to add one and give it a priority if you feel inclined to do so. And take some time. We have three minutes. You'll be surprised how long three minutes feels when you're just sitting there. For our virtual friends, on your phones, you will have to press on one of the guiding principles and you will see two carrots, an up arrow and a down arrow. Continue hitting the up or down on the item until you get it in the order that you want. And then go ahead and hit submit. And we will see live if any of these change. Right, as people participate, we will see what their opinion is. And it's okay, scratch out, reorder, no problem. No penalty. All right, I will gladly walk around and collect the assignment. Thank you. Thank you. You know, if I wasn't an architect, I thought I'd be a good school teacher. There you go. All right. Laura, did you refer to? Thank you. Thank you. All right. All right, now. Our last activity. And we will have a wrap-up in a closing segment. So our last activity is this image gallery. And here, I would like you to walk around. Look at these images and, and comment. Positive, negative. I like this. I wish we had this. I don't like this. Use the stickies and markers and offer your commentary. It gives us an idea of what interests you, but also exposes you to some classrooms throughout the the country and the world that, that you may not have here. For our virtual friends, this is another nine-minute activity. For our virtual friends, I will run through all nineteen slides. And they will have thirty seconds. A slide to vote on their perception of that space. So for those locally, go ahead and start your tour. Take your time. We have nine minutes to go through all of these. I will be advancing the slide for our virtual guests every thirty seconds.
How are you?
I'll have a question first.
This works. We are on cafeteria, no stove.
You may feel strongly about an image. Maybe that one you have a little bit more to say.
He's calling me actually, Captain. A little locker. Yeah.
It's the average size of a classroom within all the different schools.
So the rise guidelines is around eight hundred and fifty square feet. Classroom. Very rarely are we able to maintain that because it becomes cost prohibitive. We need to. You know, when we were looking to reduce square footage, that's the first place that we have to cut.
And they base that off of what was the fifty based off of like fifty? So I can accommodate so many students or how does that work?
Correct. So the number of students is typically based on teacher contract. Of what they could handle.
Thank you for the response today. No, I just wanted to be sure that I was.
I've talked to John before on exactly what to include.
I'm hopeful they can move that along.
I'd have to go back. I'd be guessing if I did right now. I know kindergarten.
As we look at.
Twelve hundred square feet.
They really take a snapshot on the thirtieth.
That is their guideline. That is the.
We had been, and that then informs. It's passed on. That informs what we'll do, what the result will be in terms of.
Okay, Colin. It's, there's so much consensus online with the virtual participants. Generally, yes. It really is cool to see that in real time. This reminds me of Barrington Middle. So many flex spaces.
Maybe not so much this one, but the ones you'll see on the other side.
Look at the green screen.
Or how they set it up in.
I put two expenses for that one.
I'm sorry, but that green screen, there's so much you could.
Typing in and then I'm just gonna indicating. You know what.
I know, but that is, you could do with a green screen in schools. It's just the coolest thing. That's different. Just a line. Um, yeah, I see, like in. Yes, headstock, arm stock, shoulder stock. Sorry, no, no, no. Pretty user-friendly.
We're a little over halfway done. And just a few more images for our virtual guests.
Thank you. I like that one, but not really.
Yeah.
Neutral. Good for older kids, but not. Right, the little ones. Older kids love cafe seating. This one's cool. Wow, that has a lot of different. Now we just have the same desk.
I just downstairs. Yeah, I just walked right up. The lady was like. Hang around for fifteen minutes. I was like, I'm just going right upstairs. If I have an issue, I'll come back. I was wondering. I was wondering. Oh, and I did say it. I had thought it was, well, my like scheduled time was later, but.
So I try to make it into.
After work, so Caitlin and I just walked right in.
It's all good. We'll be on site tomorrow.
I feel like they have to be put in context too. That's the hard thing to think about it too.
Right, like you can't just turn a regular classroom into. Well, you do have a response to it though, you know what I mean, like a thumbs up.
All right. So. First off, before we conclude, I want to do say thank you very much. You all worked today, spent some time here with me. Doing things that you were maybe not planning on doing, so I appreciate it, our virtual guests, thank you, I hope that worked out for you all. I do want to open up the floor to comments, questions, concerns as we go through the entire process. Our next steps are to take this information and start to aggregate it, document the comments, try to understand. What we are reading and what we're hearing, and see how that influences those deferred maintenance items that we talked about and the capital improvement items. We're gonna make recommendations and presentations to the building committee, the school committee, and the town council. And we look to come back and reconvene with the community in November after we have put all of this into a blender. But I certainly want to open up the floor to virtual comments, live comments, questions. Opportunities for improvement, you bring up a good point, this pinching maybe, the image is too small when we do it virtually, so that's a good comment, I appreciate it.
To anyone attending, attending virtually, excuse me, if you want to raise your hand, we can unmute you if you want to talk. Let me have one person. Jenna Bagnuski, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, I really liked the options that had the flexible seating and kind of the ability to have. Kind of separate pods, I thought that was a really cool idea that supports learners that would struggle with some of the like. You know visually or auditorily noisy environments, so I thought that was a very neat sort of innovation and I really liked the. The loose stone sort of outdoor classroom because I could definitely see that also as. Kind of like a general gathering space for community groups in like off, like not the school year or after school hours. And it kind of being more of a community feature as well, depending on where it was placed, of course.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just would hope that you would, whenever you get this all together, I know we have another meeting in November, but you've got to keep the town council in the loop. Everything that comes forward, keep us in the loop so that we can. Comment on it, so, and some of these classrooms look really good, these big ones, but I'm not sure they fit. Wilbur McMahon School, one of the questions I had, they look like some of them are twice as big as this room. Cubicles in them, how is the, how are the teachers and the aides gonna control the kids, I mean. Unless the kids have really changed when I, from when I went to. Around, you did. The teacher wasn't in the class, stepped out for a minute, everybody went wild. So, I mean.
No, I appreciate the comment, and you know, these are a collection of images across the world. The Department of Education has a guideline on recommended classroom sizes. We struggle with that size anyway because we cannot afford to build that much square footage, so. It's, you know, we are not inclined to make rooms bigger than they need to be. The flexible furniture gives the instructors an opportunity to do more with a smaller space. And, and that's why I wanted to pick some of these images for you because. In addition to some deferred maintenance, thi- this may be a pilot study program into some classroom furniture improvements that give. The staff the opportunity to try different teaching and left and teaching and learning. Methods.
Our classrooms are generally very traditional in terms of furnishings, either individual desks with integrated seating. And or tables and chairs. We have in the primary grades more flexible seating options, definitely, we added a flexible seating. On a cart for some outdoor learning, our teachers are loving a classroom set. That we purchased beginning of the school year when we didn't have the tents. And we could likely purchase more with S S refunds, but they are loving those seats. They stack, they're on, they're mobile, and they're super hearty. And our, I guess that our kids are really liking them, so our forays into modular seating have been very successful, that's for sure.
Good.
Um, I really like some of these images that look more like communal spaces, like the library and our commons area and stuff, I think just one of the. Challenges for our school specifically and what we need to keep in mind when thinking about this is we serve students from. Below five to thirteen, so we need to make sure that whether it's the furniture or the design of the space.
Age-appropriate.
Yeah, that all kids would be able to access it and not just certain groups of students.
That's a good point.
Hey, question for you, just, so I understand this correctly. Where, how far do you go with your services through this whole? Program, like.
So we.
Where do you stop?
Sure, we will support you through the stage one, the stage two submission. Then there's a period of time between the stage two submission, which is in February, to your approval in May, where they. Where the school building authority may ask for comments, and we continue to give them comments until you get your approval. And then if you're going to go for a bond vote, we will support you with materials that we would have already generated. Floor plans, three D renderings, et cetera, in support of a referendum. And then at that point, if the referendum passes, then you will move on to stage three. Where you will send out an RFP for architects and engineers to do the work that you elect to do, we obviously will submit on that. And if we are successful, then we will stay with you through that process, which is. Called stage three, the design, and then stage four, which is the construction. So I will work with you as long as you will have me.
Okay, so. And that's fine, I just, so the short answer is up to stage two is what you follow through to as of right now, right, that's what we would expect.
Yeah, yeah, if you're gonna go bond, we will support you in the bond vote.
I think the plan, according, John McNamee couldn't be here tonight, his other district has a meeting and negotiations, and it's pretty critical. I think the plan is short-term, definitely, local monies.
Okay.
We're working with a surplus right now and building that in. For some capital improvements and deferred maintenance, and look what happened the past three weeks with the HVAC system. Servy, as well as our alarm system, we have put over four thousand dollars into it. Some of the parts were obsolete, et cetera, et cetera, and then, so what if. Stage three is a long way off, how does that work with this process?
So you will, in stage two, you will receive your approval.
Right.
And it'll come in an MOU, memorandum of understanding, it'll say your school, and it will say the dollar amount. And that's really all that's on that piece of paper and your reimbursement rate.
And thirty-five percent.
Yep, and then as you do projects.
Stage.
You will submit them in by the end of June to receive housing aid in October. Typically how it's worked.
Right.
So.
How, how long is that thirty-five percent good for?
Well, so that's an entitlement program that is adjusted every year. The idea of the incentives was to help districts sort of overcome a backlog of work. Those incentives, some of them start to expire in December of twenty twenty-two. Your base entitlement is thirty-five percent. It is unlikely it will just go higher. The potential is that it could go lower.
Right.
And that would be the state legislature that determines that, as they go, whatever process they use with RIDE to determine your reimbursement, so. If there is an opportunity for you to get some additional incentive points, points that address. Health and safety. Those points I would encourage you to get because I'd much rather you get forty percent instead of thirty-five percent. Waiting years, your percentage could just go to thirty or lower.
We'll have the plan.
But you will have an approved plan that RIDE will reimburse, so over the next five years. Whatever projects you do, and your reimbursement does get locked in, by the way, when you get that stage two, so. Let's say we develop, I'll just say five million, say a five million dollar plan over the next five years, that piece of paper will say thirty-five percent, that's what you're gonna get. Even if things start to go lower, you're locked in.
So that's the short answer, we have five years from.
Five years at thirty-five percent, may be able to grab forty in year. One, right, if they expire at the end of December of twenty twenty-two.
They incentivize the health and safety.
Exactly, now, they may extend those incentives a year because of COVID, there have been rumors of that, but I haven't seen anything yet.
Is this necessity of school construction program new, did it exist when we did our. Previous work, do you know, I mean, is this, is this a new way of deciding and awarding. On RIDE's part, how they choose to do capital improvements throughout the state or.
Uh, I, I would say that the, certainly the incentive program is new, that was part of that two hundred and fifty million statewide bond that was voted on a couple of years ago. That is new, the reimbursement process, I believe, has always existed.
Right.
They have just made the progress, the process a little bit more rigorous. To make sure that what communities are doing is what they need, and everybody is going about it the right way.
How do we answer the question as a community? And I'm not saying what's the answer here, but I think it's something that we need to consider. How do we answer to the, to the public, yes, we did this improvement this many years ago at this value. And now we're taking, we're proposing to take another step, the question would be, well, why didn't, if it, if it was health and safety and those sorts of things, which is what. At the last minute, our project was constrained from, which caused it to, to kind of shrink from, from X to about half X. Is there, is there a way to make that case that these are things that we had back there that we had to sacrifice? Do you see that as a, I mean, is that a viable way to explain it?
Well, I think we're going on ten years since that was completed, nine, nine, eight, nine, ten years from start to finish, and. This, the cafeteria did shrink from its original plan, and so that, that's why there's no stove, there's only an oven, and I did write a grant for a sonic steamer so that more fresh food could be done. So there's no stove, there's no dishwasher. And so we're using a sink at the, you know, at the right tap rate and everything else, but it is a constraint. There are doors that were not replaced, I'm sure they did sort of triage back then, so doors leading to the oasis, I gave. Community member tour and I couldn't get in, I couldn't get out, the courtyard to nowhere is such a waste of outdoor space, especially now with COVID where they're encouraging more. Outdoor learning, and it's also safe because it is, it's enclosed. Mike was right, when we had the tents, we did all of, you know, we did a half million dollar project just a few years ago. To put air conditioning in the gym natorium and harden the main entrance and, and the main office, thank goodness we did that before COVID. But, you know, there are other, other pieces that need a focus as well. So I know to make this palatable, given that, you know, there was a thirteen million dollar project nine years, nine, ten years ago. I think we could tie some of it to the pieces that had to fall by the wayside back then due to funding. We could also sort of. You know, really. Get some publicity around the fact that we could get thirty-five percent reimbursement, just like we did on the half million dollar project. And that was a mix, you know, that was a commingling of local monies, grant monies, reimbursement, et cetera, and that was a really good. Streamlined, highly effective project, I feel. And so it's pieces. Like, yeah, just like you said, tying it to what had to be jettisoned due to the lack of funding years ago, that we can sort of circle back and remediate. And so with safety issues, you know, we have all of this protected space. Rather than putting kids in a tent, sitting ducks if there is ever an event, a critical event. And, and you have kids with the flaps down, and, and so Mike was right about that. This space somehow making it its waist high, if you remember, it's not, and there's only one egress and, and all that crazy stuff, so. I would say using existing space, not adding. Some capital improvements that need to happen, some windows and doors, the HVAC system, I think is, is a nice to have. It's not, you know, a critical need, but we do have the infrastructure, you know, there, that was a really good component of the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen project. We have MERV thirteen filtering, that put us ahead of the pack definitely during COVID. We do have a humidity problem, I put up, you know, one of my stickies said humidity, we had some white mold this summer, we had to toss out some furnishings. We did bring in air masters to look at some of the mini splits and so forth, we had to deal with the verger in the oasis because we had a lot of the foliage. You know, impeding the airflow of some of those mini splits, et cetera. So you're right, we need to remediate some of the issues from ten years ago, that was an excellent project. And if we triage it, I think we could end up with. Some twenty, so new century learning enhancements, some modular furnishings and so forth, we could even, you know, sort of subsume that within our operating budget. Capital expenses over the next few years, but the building envelope needs some. Definitely needs support, as well as our HVAC system, we had, you know, that huge boiler leak, we've already replaced a boiler, as you know. So the building continues to be used, continues to run, continues to have the highest amount of people. In the community and every single day, bar none, there's no other building in the community that services so many people all at once, it's a high-use building. And it needs constant maintenance and constant. Improvements, and the nice to have would be some of the enhancements for the twenty-first century, century learning, modular seating, so this, we don't have to go too far with it because we have nice. Big classrooms that were renovated and tweaked. Ten years ago, we do have some acoustical issues though in some of our classrooms, especially in our middle school. 10 years ago. We do have some acoustical issues though, in some of our classrooms, especially in our middle school. So I, I think, you know, the 12 million was, you know, envisioned beyond the sort of responsible innovation that this is all about. And I think we can all agree that the envelope needs some upgrades, HVAC, some of the classrooms. And we need to do something with this space. It's, it would just be the best way to capture a safe outdoor learning environment for kiddos. And I think Phil will have some really good renderings for that.
I think one thing you gotta, I think long and hard about. I think there's still $8 million owed on the bond for the last.
Right. John was trying to get a hard figure and I think you, you were going to sort of.
So to go and ask for another four or five million from the general public here. You're gonna have to really put something forward that's going to be really palatable for everybody to accept. So I would try to keep your wish list as small as possible.
I agree.
Things done that you need to get done and have some good hard facts, some good hard renderings of this is what we really need. You know, some of these classrooms might be great. I like some of the pitches myself, but some of those are like to me, 2050 is what they are. They're not, they're not JF Wilbur right now. We're going to understand that if we don't get the funding, you're getting that. So I'm just advising you to try to keep it as small and concise as you can. Because we got to sell it to the public. The town council has to sell it to the public. And that's going to be hard if it's not appropriate. Last time they wanted, I think it was 35 million.
Right.
And there was no way it was going to happen. And that's when the school committee finally said, well, we got, we got to do what we got to need. I think this is another situation. You need to do what you need to do. And this and some other things, if there's some money left over, which surely there isn't. So it's a shortfall most of the time. And you can do some of these other things that you want, make the classes more efficient. I think you really got to look at what needs to be done. So we can sell it to the public.
Point taken. Absolutely.
Okay, it's just, is there any limit on the 35%?
Any limit?
Yes, as far as what you'll, I understand you'll get reimbursed up to 35%. Will they reimburse up to a certain amount? That 35%, like they'll say, yeah, 35% up to a million dollars and no more? Or is it 35% of whatever the project is?
Whatever the project is. And because they, they get to see that. For example, Newport, when we put their package together, the, the project was $107 million when we submitted. During the stage two process, Ryan looked at it and said, we don't agree with 107 million. We agree with 97 million. So they get 35% of 97 million. So it's whatever the project is, as long as they agree with what you say it's going to cost. Or they will give it a haircut.
Okay. And I, I understand you're saying we're locked into that rate for five years. Is that as long as we get locked into that rate before December of 22?
No. No, that, the, the December of 22 has to do with the additional incentives above
Reimbursement.
For 35% base reimbursement.
Okay.
However, if we do not submit in February of 2022, you are then not able, then you are almost starting all over again. Which I'd hate, I'd hate to, you have a technical assistance grant, which is what's paying for us to do this work for you. So I, I don't want to see you miss this opportunity of submitting in February of 2022. That's why we've done all this work. We will make sure we absolutely meet that schedule and Ride is expecting us to submit in 2022. Are we submitting four million, five million, one million? Who, who knows? That's what we're working on. But I would strongly advise that, that you submit in February of 2022 to, to get your approval in May. And then decide how you want to fund it. Local funding, a little bit over the next five years, you sell a bond, et cetera.
How about refinancing the current bond? I know you had spoken about that. We may not, may never even get there, you know, for, for another bond, but I know that that is an option to refinance.
I think the town administrator was looking into that. He was.
Yeah, we're definitely going to pursue that in combination with moving things out of the town's capital plan that are appropriate into the American Rescue Plan funding.
Right.
And so we'll be doing those kinds of things. And to your point, we, we just need to be ready and May is, is perfect. I mean, that's, that's when, that's when the town meeting will occur. Obviously we'll need to have a little bit of have to have the right number in place, but that's where we can have the details laid out. In between that and now, we can answer some of the questions about what's the, what do we have left to pay on the bond? Because I believe our number will go down not only from being able to apply funds, but also from the back
Please, no. There was no way I could let the $50,000 technical assistance grant fall by the wayside. I, if it's free, it's for me. That's how super dependents think. And so I absolutely had to move forward with this sort of planning and responses.
And that message also, I think, needs to be woven into what you're saying is that this is not, you know, the, the, the creation of this plan was itself a grant.
Right.
Except for the, the work that's put in by those who are present. But I mean, the ability to do it was grant based and they're.
Absolutely. And necessary, you know, whether any of the projects move forward or not, it, it it's absolutely necessary for this building to be assessed every five to 10 years. In some way, shape or form. It is your, it is a major asset and a treasure for this community.
All right.
That's wonderful.
Yes. Is there an opportunity to solicit more input? Um, you know, I look around, this room's pretty small attendance. I'm not sure how many are online. But I feel like, you know, especially every teacher who teaches at this school should have an opportunity to basically do this exercise that you just did tonight. I mean, they may, we're busy tonight and couldn't participate, but I feel that. And I also feel let every parent have an opportunity to maybe ask their child, like, what would help you, you know, like, what would you like to see in a classroom? I mean, I know my son has, has made several comments about how warm it was in his classroom and how they had fans running to just cool them down, but then the papers would fly everywhere. Very impractical, you know, and.
Noisy. Sure.
And, and you know, HVAC, you know, he was just like, it's hot. It's really, really hot when, when, in the spring and, and in the early fall. So that's, you know, that's what a child sees through his eyes, you know, that, you know, simple, you know, HVAC, maybe that's high on the list of improvements. So, but it would be important to get a much broader input from those that matter, that work here every day and that sit in this, in this building every day.
If I may, and thank you so much for your valuable feedback. We had a full house of staff members. We did have a staff engagement group in early September. And it was incredibly productive. Our teachers were very forthcoming with lots of feedback and wish lists and et cetera, et cetera. Thank you so much. So true.
Did it, um, has that been summarized? Like, has the number one ask been like bubbled to the top? Like, what's, what's the majority of people think is like the, the critical path?
Yeah.
You're going to spend your money, where would it, where would you get the most?
So that's like you were, we're right in the middle of it right now. All right. So we, we solicited some administration input, the staff input. We want town council and community input. So we are aggregating all that together. We have a general idea of some of the issues that are surfacing and it's everything that I've heard here thus far. You know, we have everything set up. Why don't we air condition these classroom wings right here? Why don't we take care of this courtyard? Why don't we take care of the kitchen? So.
It's common themes.
What, what we want to see.
Absolutely.
Our physical assessment, where we identify these things as either deficient or non-existent and maybe appropriate. And what we want is alignment between that and what we hear. And then the, the project surfaces. And like I said, we got to do that responsibly. That's all.
Okay. Good to hear. There was just, there's more input that would be used than small audience that's here tonight. Cause I just.
And I sent out a survey. It was for feedback around how to spend some of the S R three funds and, you know, the stimulus funds. And I get a lot of really high participation, a lot of really good feedback that also impacts this project, outdoor learning space.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of parents wrote that. So.
I know the COVID sim, I mean, State of Rhode Island got a lot of millions of dollars. So how we spend that?
We got 144,000 here. And I've already started drafting it based on stakeholder feedback. And a lot of it has to do with the facility.
The physical plant. Yeah.
So I guess one thing I'd like to add that I think of before, when you were going through the different boards, if you would, behind the building currently in where they just asphalted in the back.
Yeah.
I'd rather see that as green space. And I understand we just spent money on asphalt. But currently the front of the building gets used for outdoors classrooms. I'm not in favor of that at all from a safety standpoint. So as far as I'm concerned, that asphalt that's in the back should have been as far as grass. That should have been actually an area where the kids are, are not seen from the street from a, from a safety standpoint. So I guess that would be my two cents to add to that board.
Okay.
To actually turn that into more of a green space. I know that there's supposed to be some parking going on in the back and I don't know to what part that fits into there.
The town, town hall.
Looks like the court.
Bob knows exactly where it's going.
Yeah, it's right. It's immediate, it's right in here.
Right there. Yeah.
Okay.
So one of the challenges will be to make it useful. And what we're thinking is we're likely going to take the building down, the old fire station down.
The maintenance farm?
Order to move that, that part. But that won't be, that's not a prerequisite to having a parking install. We
Excellent.
Probably the hardest thing about putting a parking in is going to be the carefully installed patio behind the community center.
Well, we took that tree down for you already.
Wasn't exactly where I need. A little bit closer because the sewer line and the water lines from the town hall.
Oh, go down there.
They're going to there. So, but it's a long answer to the question. We think we're going to have off-street parking, substantial off-street parking. It should not impact what you just began with, which I think we should look at whether there's anything that can be used even behind here. Because this is, this belongs to us, not, it's not.
That's good to know about.
I just think that's where we should concentrate on green space.
How far back do delivery trucks go?
Yeah, I think that's what the, I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Or add on to Mike.
I don't think they go all the way back.
How far back?
Delivery trucks go. When we get delivery trucks, they go down that.
Right.
I don't think they go all the way over onto that.
They can. There's a stuff, there's an all, I don't know.
Yeah.
Plus an egress for fire cannot go onto a lawn. It has to go on to a finished surface. So that's why that area was resurfaced. And we now have six outdoor picnic tables there, commercial grade. So we have an exterior year round annex to our cafeteria. So we are using it and the kids are out there every day with their classes. Not the same as here, you know, where this this is a whole other issue. This is just a mess.
Well, if, if that's it, that's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
I'm going to take a motion to adjourn and I'm going to do it by way of roll call because that's the way the agenda says. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mataronis. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. And thank you so much.
Hi.
Thank you.
Abby Sadi, absent. Can I air?
I.
Kenahan, absent. Mike Rocha.
All right.
Phil, I love the interactive piece. It really did. I love doing it.